We have different time.
Before we get started, anyone in the audience who's wearing a hat, please remove the hat. Okay, City Council is back in session. On item seven, unfinished business, which we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight, appointment of council member Aaron Williamson to the Arkansas River Power Authority on behalf of the city of Trinidad. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Yabona?
No, I think Aaron will be a nice asset to the Arkansas River Power Authority.
No, I don't think he's going to. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes.
I don't know, it's maybe the order. Hate to clue that to Arkansas Valley Power. No, I think he'll do a great job.
The other question I had was, are you going to work with Carlos Lopez still? Are you both going to be working?
Yes.
We would occupy two seats.
Okay.
Two questions, man. Congratulations.
I don't know if congratulations is really... But I think it's only right because you're in the energy sector.
Right now.
Having gas and I think electric is right along with that, so I think you're right in line.
I really appreciate the vote of confidence in anticipation of reviewing the online budgets and stuff that's available, so I will, I guess, take the vote.
Okay.
Let them know.
Well, call the vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Griego?
Uh, yes.
Hesitation, hesitation.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Yes. Item eight D, consideration of appointment of Pat Holla to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think Mr. Holla-
You want to come forward, please?
Okay.
In case anybody has any questions?
We kind of knew each other by now. Good evening, all.
Hold on. Do you have any questions for him?
No, I don't. But I thought, I think he'll be a nice asset to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Board.
Thank you. What you got? Can this, Derek?
No, nothing.
No, no questions. I think he'll do a good job.
I appreciate the work that you already do for Trinidad. I think you'll do very good.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, if possible. Yeah, great asset to the community, for sure.
Thank you.
No questions. Obviously, you have a lot of zeal for what you believe in and are willing to put in some effort, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
You know, part of your application, you mentioned that you were involved with Tora, Urban Renewal, and another municipality. Is that correct?
Uh, we didn't have, it wasn't called that. It was a small rural town, so, but in the same vein, yes.
Okay, so it was a kind of an urban renewal type organization?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I just think that's, like I said, I was originally on the original group of people when Tora came around and know a little bit about it since then, so, but welcome aboard and see what happens with the vote.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Call the vote, please?
Debono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight C, consideration of appointment of Jeff Cochran to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, from Mr. Yabona?
No, I don't really know Mr. Cochran.
I have no idea.
I'm here if you'd like to get in.
Any questions?
Come on down.
All right.
Any questions, right?
Oh, no, I haven't.
I have any questions, but appreciate your willingness to serve.
No questions.
Other than submitted information, I have no previous knowledge, but I do appreciate your interest in it, and thank you for that.
I guess you have a little bit of knowledge of urban renewal, or what we should be doing, or what you want to do, or what can we do?
What we should be doing? No, I don't know about that.
There's a lot of work to be done in that.
There's a lot of work to be done. I'm just here on the ground floor, looking to get some knowledge on what we can do.
The biggest thing for you is training.
That's correct.
Hopefully that Chairman of the Board will set up some training for you to get you indoctrinated.
I'm absolutely available for that.
Because that's something that is going to be absolute, absolute necessity.
Right.
Okay, let it go for the discussion. Call the vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Congratulations, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Judge Jeff. Item eight D, mural permit, application filed by 422 Commercial LLC. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Wozenski or Mr. Levinson, are either of you here?
Yes.
You are?
Mr. Wozenski, Tom Wozenski.
Okay.
On behalf of my wife, Melinda Kaye here as well, but she's, she's on the call, but she's not speaking.
Yeah, let's see if we have any questions from, oh, Ms. Hall, why don't you kind of throw us in first of all?
Counsel, this mural was brought to us by Mr. Wozenski and his wife, or his coworker, Melinda, and I feel like it's really going to be a great asset to Commercial Street. We took this before the different commissions-
Sure enough.
-for review, and just as a code has requested, and their consideration, they approved it. I think historic preservation had two conditions that they requested, which was to reach out to fill along and notify them, because that's not in our code, so we did just that. And the other condition was to reach out to History Colorado. And I've provided a letter, it's not in your packet, but I apologize for that, but I do have a couple of the comments that History Colorado had on, in regards to the mural. Basically, it says, states that they have a lot of consideration for historic preservation, but this is not really considered a historic building, so their comment is in the middle of the letter there in regards to it, but it's still quite positive.
The only other thing that I have here that I got tonight, this came from Toyota, to change the, do they put the praying mantis into a hummingbird?
Yes.
So that was the only thing, and I'm sure you're aware of that, so I guess they didn't like the praying mantis.
I think the artist reached out to us and asked if there's anything, or I just don't like, I don't like insects flying at me. I really think this is going to be something that will add to the area. I don't think it will distract from historic district at all, so.
Joe Wozenski, you have any comments that you'd like to make?
First of all, I want to thank the Mr. Mayor and the City Council for having us here to present. We appreciate your time. We've owned the building for about a year now, and as you know, the building's painted green and blue, and it doesn't fit well in the historic district, and this is something that my wife, Melinda, actually came up with as a gift, kind of to Trinidad. She said to allow us to do business here and to, you know, kind of preserve the history and the legacy of Trinidad with Fisher's Peak. We have a mine there, we have a yute, Indian woman cultivating the land, and that's kind of the theme that we're using here, is the land we love, and we want to take care of it. The praying mantis is a bit overwhelming there. It's kind of like attacking the wolf. We're downsizing the praying mantis, and I think in that spot, we're going to put a buffalo, or a herd of buffalo, but we are adding a hummingbird and a flower somewhere in there, so we are adding a hummingbird and a flower. But again, it's designed to depict the importance of the area's heritage, the land, the wildlife, and the beauty of Trinidad.
Any questions from counsel, Mr. Yabona?
No, it's just, it's certainly a nice integration and beautification of, like you said, history and wildlife and land, and it's certainly different, but it kind of grows on you.
It's great over here.
I can't follow that one. I couldn't understand the significance of the characters, but thank you for, that makes sense now that you mention it. I have no questions, but one, are you committed to maintaining this mural?
Absolutely, and that came up in several of the discussions with the groups that we met, the city zoning and permitting and heritage. We are putting, for the first 10 feet, or eight feet, 10 feet of the mural, it's, we're using a glaze that's graffiti proof, that we can wipe down and clean, and we are agreeing, we are going to maintain the integrity of the mural and make sure that it's always going to look nice. One thing I do want to point out, too, that nobody's mentioned, but I want to bring it up, the cars are kind of in the way right now, the way we did it, but we do have the Purgatory River going along the bottom. You can kind of see blue in the middle, but yeah, that's significant, too, having that in there.
I like the idea of the buffalo.
Oh, we are, yes.
It did say in the application about maintenance portion.
Oh, it did, okay.
Well, my good comment, I'm really glad you put Native American in there and a coal miner representing Trinidad, but over there on this end with green, can you throw in Simpson's Rest with this Trinidad sign on it?
Well, we had, the reason why it's that way, and there is a reason, we had to get a variance from this planning and zoning.
I was just-
But we are, no, we are.
I was just trying to throw that in. I think that's part of the history of Trinidad with the sign there on Simpson's Rest, okay, if there's a place there for it.
We'll do our best, but you can see the upper left where it's green?
Yeah.
That is not finished, because it didn't, the variance, we're getting, didn't allow us to finish it, because it was already at 250 feet, so we're getting a variance to go over that, so we can finish the top left corner of the building, and Chris wanted me to point out the top of the building there where it's green, we are going to paint that, too. We're going to take all the green off the building. And the brick in the front of the building, we're gonna, you can see on the bottom here, we have a couple of different phases. One of the phases is to take the painted brick in front of the building and restore it to the original brick. And so that's all part of what we're going to do, to help it blend in, and when people come in over the bridge, they don't see a big white and blue and green building, they see something beautiful.
Derek, any questions?
I really like murals, and I think they do do exactly what it says here. They help empower communities and spark economic revitalization. I'm glad you were able to make use of our mural ordinance, and it sounds like the process went fairly slowly and, I mean, quickly and well, and I know that Arts and Culture was fine with it from an aesthetic point of view, so I'm really happy that you're doing this, and thank you for your sensitivity to the area and the colors. I, that green and blue has always been kind of a jarring thing to me, too, so it'll be nice if that's, it's going to fit in better, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thanks. From this rendering, it looks like it's going to be amazing. Looks good. Eli, did you have like a, you were taking requests, is that what you were saying? Like, a hot dog cartwheel.
And a big fish.
Looks good.
I'm not going to critique the art on here, that's not my opinion, but I would like to thank you for your stewardship of the building. And I wanted to ask, from your perspective, and just a short narration of it, how did you find navigating the mural ordinance to be?
We found it painless. Actually, everybody that we met with was very open, open-minded. We had some great discussions. Actually, everybody prepared us, not everybody, but a few people said it's going to be a long and hard process, and it was quite the opposite. And actually, we had the help of Ms. Hall here, who guided us through the process.
Thank you for your-
Could we bookmark this urban history, please? Just going to bookmark, I'm sorry. I have no further questions. You know, I really, that was a good question for you to ask, because that's something that, you know, when we introduced the mural ordinance, I think we as council always kind of wondered, you know, how the process would go, and this is the second application that we've had for murals, and it sounds like what really did, what you guys really did is you took into real account of what the aesthetics of the community would like to have in murals, and that's good to see, just from the rendering that you did. Gets rid of that bland, green building, white building, and I think it's very, to me, it's very aesthetically appealing, and thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. And I tell you what, it was the brainchild of Melinda Kaye and my other half, and Melinda's the, it was, I'm not going to take credit for, it was her idea, she pushed it. She's the most incredible person that you'll ever meet, and the most incredible person and the smartest woman that I've ever met in my life, so.
That's the best thing, that's the best thing to say.
It's not video.
Anyway, thank her for-
I won't, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for council members. We appreciate your time and respect your time as well.
Call the vote, please?
Melinda has her hand raised to speak.
Okay, Melinda?
The artist is also on the line.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and if you did have any, like, specific questions, I just wanted to let you know that Dan is online. If you had any artist questions for him, thank you.
Any questions for Dan?
Yeah.
No, it does sound like there's any questions, so go ahead.
Sorry. Dan's an amazing artist, but-
Thank you, Dan. Thank you very much for the opportunity to add some color and life and storytelling to Trinidad's walls. I'm really excited for this project.
Go ahead and call the vote, please?
Debono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight E, resolution appropriating money from the General Fund to the Economic Development Fund for the purpose of providing incentives for the creation of Housing Now Affordable Work Housing Incentive Program. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Valentine? Actually, Mr. Yurman, who helped us along the way, is here to present, and I'll let him.
If you want to take the pleasure, go ahead. Thank you for having me tonight, and I'm excited to get this to the finish line. As we know, the city has been actively working on looking at how to incentivize workforce housing. You're working on a needs assessment, which identified a significant housing need, and these three recommendations come after meeting with the developing community and trying to figure out a way to really incentivize both rentals and homeownership in your community. We originally looked at a $2.5 million incentive, but I think the council was wise in starting with a million and a half to the Economic Development Fund to fund three different programs that specifically address housing. The first is a downtown redevelopment, which targets $25,000 per unit to bring a vacant unit to the downtown, or the, I'm going to say it wrong, ADO, Anti-Dilapidated Ordinance, is that right? Look at that. I did find out from the staff that you actually have a complete list of those properties, so that actually really helps, from my perspective of actually implementation of that, having an actual list of those properties that qualify, we can send letters to potential property owners from those. That makes it a lot easier with single-family or residential properties. So that was added after the discussion that you had at the last meeting, to include the ADO properties as well as any vacant properties that are in the downtown, so that is the first program, and that would be $25,000 per unit to a property owner to bring it back, a maximum of $200,000 for properties. You want me to go through all of them, or? The second one is Housing Now, which is for new housing, that would be priced at 100% AMI or less, so that's $294 for a three-bed, two-bath, basically. That would have a permanent de-construction on the unit that would require that the unit be occupied by a full-time resident, and also any type of new construction that has a state, that could be, that money could be paired with state funding or grants for something like light tech. Again, that's $15,000 per unit or up to $150,000 for one project. The final one is the one that I would suggest that basically lives in perpetuity, or until a time that the council deems not to continue on, but that would be the money that comes in, that you're currently putting in the Economic Development Fund at 4% a year, which is for not taffy waivers, but taffy deferrals for development, so you would actually be taking the money from the Economic Development Fund and making whole your system development funds, whether it's gas, electric, wastewater, or water. What's really important about that is, I'm a big advocate about keeping your enterprise funds healthy. I think you had an ordinance today, even talking about rates. What's nice about the way that's structured is it's actually not putting a burden on existing users, it's actually reducing the burden and future costs of existing users, because you're actually taking money and putting it into those enterprise funds and making them whole. So you're not waiving fees, but you're actually taking money from a different fund and putting it in there, and in the big scheme of things, when you add actually new users and new taps, that brings the cost down, because it's economies of scale service. So I think it's really important that the public knows that at large, it's not a fee waiver, so it's not, you're not taking the burden of affordable housing and putting it on the existing community, you're actually reducing existing community demand by keeping those funds healthy through that deferral program, and so that's really important to the economic development of the community. So those are the three programs. You do have a, the other great news is that you have a DOLA grant that you have an RQ out for, that has the implementation of incentives, this program, as well as some additional qualified strategies through DOLA, that you're actively looking for consulting services for, so if it's not Sked or myself helping with that, certainly a new consultant can be working on implementation strategies for these three programs, and it's certainly a major tool to getting workforce housing going. So the final piece I'll add is that the way the resolution is worded, you'll see in there that there is specific mention to qualified strategies in the DOLA and the different house bills, which is really critical to showing that the city has taken the necessary steps to make you eligible, and for these funds to be eligible for matching grants for property owners, as well as projects to leverage those funds.
Questions from counsel, Mr. Yabona?
Sir, is there a price tag for consultative services?
What do you mean?
I mean, is there a charge for, when you consult with the agency?
For me?
Yes.
Yes.
And the numbers you come up with, is that a percentage basis, the $25,000? How do you come up with those numbers, the $15,000?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The numbers came out to being a percentage of the unit, so if you think about, when I thought about how to try, how this wasn't a handout of make sure that there was enough skin in the game from both the city and the property owner to make it worthwhile, the $25,000 in the downtown in particular, if you think of the cost of a potential new unit, it's $250,000, so it's about a 10% gap funding subsidy. So we are looking at about 10% on the gap funding subsidy for downtown, and then if you actually think about a de-restricted unit plus the $15,000 on new, and you also do taffy waivers, that's actually coming out to be about 20, so that's again another 10% gap funding, so that's kind of the sweet spot of trying to make it so that those numbers, those numbers work to make the building more affordable.
Okay.
No, I have no questions.
I do. We're going to talk a little bit right now.
That's okay.
I don't think you sold me on affordable housing, but no, let me, let me get something straight. You're going to give, well, we're going to do $25,000 for the, on the downtown area. What exactly are we looking at? Two-room, three-room, bathroom apartment? How do we decide on what we're going to do with that?
Well, it's first come, first served, and I think that's really important, because you want to make, the idea of the first two subsidies not to taffy deferral is that it is truly to incentivize and spur development. So if this is something that languishes on or has a bunch of additional requirements, it's not, it really is the first ones in the door that come in, and what we will do, so the process, let's talk to the process of Michael Yurman said, whether it turns out to be the staff after they work through this, but basically, we would have, with downtown, you'd have an initial site visit, we have already talked with Wally, we would meet with a property owner, we'd go through the unit, and we'd look at it. Well, eligible costs would be basically any kind of actual materials, and they'd have to produce receipts for those costs, and then the only labor cost would be electrical and plumbing, because both of those are professional services, but things like the actual, like, paint, the bucket of paint would be an eligible expense, but the actual paint labor would not, so HVAC systems, bringing things up to code, et cetera. If they are able to, if they go through that initial site visit, and the staff thinks it's an eligible unit, i.e. vacant, it needs some money to be repaired, they'd be invited to do a formal application. At the formal application, you'll see in your second ordinance, if it's over $50,000, would have to come in front of City Council, do as cited in your ordinance. Anything under 25, or sorry, anything under 50 would be granted administrative award. Once that letter codes the property owner from the city, those funds are considered expended. So say they get $25,000, that's $25,000 out, the count is no longer available. They would have then go pull building permit through the building department, they would get their final inspection, at the final inspection, they would produce the receipts, and if they spent more than $25,000, they would get up to $25,000. My advice to you is, it doesn't matter what kind of unit it is, it could be a studio or a three-bedroom, all those units matter, and in fact, I will even go further to say that one-bedrooms and studio apartments right now are some of the highest demand and need of a prior needs assessment, so again, at $25,000 a unit, you guys are getting a screaming deal, in my opinion, versus what you'd pay for a new one.
What I was looking at, if you get a building, let's just say, for instance, this building over here, and you put in possibilities, maybe 15, 20 apartments, one studio builds because of the size of it, that's the west building over here. We can fund up to $200,000, right? So what do they do if they don't, I mean, for the additional cost on that, is that strictly up to them?
That is.
And they have to do their own development and stuff, as far as that goes?
Yeah.
So-
It's an incentive, it's not a handout.
Right.
It's not a get.
Because it's taxpayer's money, we have to be careful with it, and have to watch for their opinion. And then another issue, I mean, I know this seems like a minor issue, but if you have some of those apartments on Main Street, if we do re-dem, we may have an issue with parking overnight, because people are going to live there, and so what do we have to look at for that? Is there specific designation for people to park, or what are we going to do?
Well, number one, let me, well, we heard it from Walsenberg, the Walsenberg stories, you know, the historic buildings were built with those apartments, and so traditionally they had a parking problem, right? And I will tell you from firsthand experience, in Salida, where I was at when we revitalized the downtown, getting those units back up, you do, you do have, a parking management plan is a really important tool. I think I actually told the staff, when the parking came up, the biggest mistake I made in Salida is I revitalized the downtown, and then I started working on trails and parks and stuff, and I didn't deal with parking. I should've, instead of parks, I should've been doing parking, put an ING on that. You can do parking management plans, you can have overnight parking from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, allow residents on the street to park, and in fact, a good parking, if you talk to any parking consultant, what they will tell you is, what you shouldn't be investing in is more and more parking spaces, what you should be investing in is turnover. A parking space should actually be five spaces every day, so you should have that space turnover five times for business and retail space. I will tell you from firsthand experience in my time in Cresta Butte, we were paying, I think it was $85,000 a parking space, so our parking fee in Lew was like, if you had to produce a space. You're not there, parking would be a good problem for the city to have, but I will say that your next planner should be looking at that and being preemptive about it, so that if you have the ability to get cheap them now or to create public parking, that that is another way to work with your, not just your downtown residents, but your business owners. And I think it's certainly a valuable thing, but there's study after study after study that'll show you that the best way to make an on-street parking spot the most valuable for your community is turnover.
Five times.
That's what they recommend throughout the day.
Can't let you slide over this. Can't let you slide over this.
Hi, I'm grateful that you're here tonight. It's nice to see you in person. I've been coming to all these meetings and, and I'm very happy that we are moving forward with this. I think it's really wise that we had the housing needs assessment done and then we had your organization analyze that and say, okay, these are the specific areas rather than the seven of us just going, ah, I don't know. So, so I'm really, really glad about this. I wanna know the implementation grant. Some questions I've been getting is people are very interested in, in knowing how to get those grants and how to leverage this money with that. So it's something that I think the city needs to be, we need to put that information out there easily for people to get to. And in the, before we have that in place, can they contact DOLA or who do they?
What I would suggest, well, so you have a, you, you have a grant that is, that is cited to pay for bringing in someone like myself to actually pay. So instead of paying like SCAD an hourly fee, you could use the grant funds to assist. You have an RFQ, let's do the eighth, let's see how that turns out, who it is. If it's not SCAD or myself in some capacity, we can certainly come in and work with the selected consultant and get them along. As far as working with DOLA and those programs, I mean, Tara Marshall and Oedit, actually, Oedit had a really great program last year that I'm almost positive that they'd be crazy not to renew because of how successful it was. And that was, that, that was a fifty-fifty match. And I, and we worked with several, SCAD worked with several, several rural property owners. The biggest issue was for them to come up with the match. And so this would, the way we have the resolution written, it would allow for this to be used for the match. The only other thing I'll say is just remember that the beauty of this is kind of your butts in your own hands as a municipality. When you take state funds, those, those come with their own deed restrictions and everything else. So, and that also adds time because it takes, I'm still waiting, I love DOLA, but I'm still on the Eastern Plains, I'm still sweating when I get a signed contract to put a sewer line in right now. So that, time is money in development, especially with supply changes and everything else. But this gives both the property owners the ability to go alone or to seek additional leveraging funds.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and thank you for being here in person. I had a question and I'm just ignorant to how it works. And so I wanted to ask about specifically the nuts and bolts of a deed restriction for a private property. I mean, if, if this is all done and the deed restriction is in place, but then the property owner or the subsequent property owner doesn't follow the deed restrictions, how does that process go?
So it's a carrot and a stick. And you whack them with a stick, the first one you whack hard enough that they scream and no one ever does it. Again, it's kind of the philosophy I have, but all our actuality is truly it. The, the way, the way it works is, so let's, let's use the new housing as an example. If it's not, the way the deed restriction would read is that it needs to be occupied a full-time permanent resident. To say someone buys it and is a second homeowner, the city does an enforcement or does an investigation and they find out, they can force the sale of that property to a, to a permanent resident. And what you would do is you'd have a, you'd have a daily fine that would be whatever your municipal code fine is that you would cite on until such a time that they showed that they were in compliance and they had the house listed for sale.
Is the municipal code fine honoring us, honors, that's enough to be a stick?
I honestly don't know what the municipal code fine is for that. For a lot of building violations or code violations, it's three hundred dollars per day.
That's fairly honor.
So it is. And I think that may be what would apply, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's just, it's just something I think we should know going forward. So it would be the city responsible for doing that?
So what I would, one of the first implementation, there's, one of the first implementation things that you'll have to do to, when you put out the application, is we'll have to have the restricted covenant for the downtown and a, I would call it more of a deed restriction for the new property because that is, that's something that you can put firmly on title. They, when you, when the applicant gets the paperwork, they need to be able to look at what the deed restriction says because they shouldn't be, they should know right up front that this is what I'm consenting to in perpetuity. And as far as example of deed restrictions, I can certainly work with council on that. There's plenty of, you're not the first community to ever do this. And so I, I have plenty of examples from communities I've worked with beyond actually citing and putting it in the code. But you, we will probably, there are things that the planning grant does allow for, for instance, is actually looking at the zoning code and looking at long-term rental, looking at the definition of permanent residence, you're gonna wanna put those definitions in the zoning code as well. And again, that is part of the DOLA planning grant to, to allow you to put those types of things. That's what they funded. So make sure that you're protecting your units long-term for affordability.
I, I just think it's super important to nail down upfront or rather test it at the end. The other, the last question I have, all, all of these funds are performance-based and reimbursed, none of them are on the front end?
The only thing that I would suggest being on the front end is the permit, a building permit waiver. So say the building permit's two thousand dollars, instead of making them pay the upfront building permit, you would just take that instead of any like a twenty-three on the back end. But I wouldn't make them write a check to this.
Okay. Okay.
Or the permit she's, for instance.
You know, in, in reading the code, I believe there is some fines in there, what your question was. That would be something that would have to be fleshed out, you know, through this entire process. The one thing that has not been mentioned tonight, but has been mentioned, our other, it's in all our packets, is that this money is available until 2024 until, or until expended. The other thing that, the reason why we decided to move from, because we have a net just over three million dollars in our Economic Development Fund to do this. And the reason why we pared this down to one point five was so that if we have to boost it at some point in time, it's there. But the other reason why is that that other one point five, if we leave that money for leveraging to get other funds, it's available for us there too. So that's the, those are the two main reasons why I think that we only went with a one point five at this point in time. So that's, that's where it's at. So, any other questions? No?
I just wanted to come back when it's guaranteed that we're gonna find out if it works. You said you got the solution, so we're gonna find out.
I'm really, I, I will say the turning point, let me put it this way, the turning point for downtown Salida, when I was a young dumb twenty-something-year-old, never saw it coming, was seeing upstairs with lights on and having people shop it, having people live and work, and yeah, it was a big change.
I was young enough to know that all those buildings had lights in them before and people were staying in them.
I bet, I bet the downtown was very active, wasn't it?
It was nice. It was, it really was.
I will say this, Frank, is that like I mentioned in the work session, I believe that, I mean, I did talk to somebody, a building owner, I think it was in January sometime, that they wanted to do something on their upstairs. And hopefully they'll take advantage of this if they're considering. And I think there's an opportune, opportunity now. I was watching the lumber market just recently, so the prices have come down considerably. They were up as high as, this is at the market level, you know, from the stock exchange at fourteen, sixteen hundred dollars per thousand. It was down to six fifty-eight just last week. So instead of paying ten dollars for a two-by-four-eight, now you might be paying five bucks. So I think the cost of even OSB, for instance, was like forty-seven bucks, it's down to like twenty-four bucks. And I think it'll probably continue to bottom out some more. So that'll be an additional incentive for people to not only take advantage of the downtown, but maybe even to build housing. So I think there's some additional incentives from that. The only thing that's gonna affect that now is going to be the, it was a rate increase of...
Interest.
Interest right now.
The one, only other thing I'd pass along, if you talk to a constituent about this, is to remind them that at this point, if their unit is vacant downtown, they're making nothing on rent. On the day that you get that C O, they're gonna start making rent too.
Exactly. Well, if there are any other questions, call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Mike.
I think you're up next to, right?
Yeah, obviously. Item H, first reading of ordinance, amending chapter seven, finance and taxation. Article six, Economic Development Fund, to allow for the creation of affordable workforce, housing incentives, and to set forth allowable development incentives and setting a public hearing at six P M. On July the fifth, twenty twenty-two, for consideration of said ordinance. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce you because we're gonna find out for sure.
Any, any motion, please?
Senator?
Second?
Second.
And for the discussion, Mr. Yurman, anything on this portion?
The only thing to add is that really what this is doing is just adding deed restricted workforce housing as an eligible expense. And then we're also ensuring that any, any expenditure over fifty thousand dollars will require a funding agreement with the city council. So if anything checks you're running, you'll, they'll be in here to prove it.
Any questions on this portion?
No.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item G, final subdivision plat application. Filed by Mont San Rafael Hospital on behalf of Trinidad Area Health Association. The hospital subdivisions for property located at parts, part of blocks seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And C, the shores inside addition to the city of Trinidad. Any motion?
Senator.
Second. Okay, discussion, Ms. Hall, put it out.
This is the second part of the three parts of the Mount San Rafael Hospital. Bringing forward to, we're gonna do the legal plating of the property for blocks seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And basically, it's putting that subdivision together. The final part will be vacating of the streets that are no longer utilized. And you have to envision that that whole Trinidad area was a residential area at one time and it still has that residential footprint and we're taking that out of the picture. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council?
Gary is here to answer any questions regarding plaques or maps as well.
Can you push DeBono?
No, no, I don't.
Screen him.
No, I wish I had a question for Mr. Terry because he's been sitting there so many times.
Greg, you have any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item H, first reading of ordinance, receding a portion of Bonaventure Avenue. A portion of Wally's rights and weight to the shores inside addition to the city of Trinidad, Montana County, Colorado, and setting a public hearing at six P M. on July the fifth, twenty twenty-two, for consideration of said ordinance. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Any motion? Second?
Second.
And any additional information, Ms. Hall?
Not at this time here.
Any additional questions from council?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. Call the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item I, emergency ordinance to reduce the cultivation fee collected by the city of Trinidad for retail marijuana. I would like to ask council to table this item, give you the reasons why. Is that we know that we need to help the marijuana industry. There's two parts of this industry. One is the cultivation side, the other one is the retail side. And we need to be able to look at this broadly across the board, not only for the cultivation, but the retail side. We've talked about maybe reducing that sales tax a little bit. I know that Ms. Navret said that there was not gonna be a huge impact to it. But I think that we need to have good documentation on that, of the numbers as to what, how it affected, how much. But we also, if we're going to do anything for the retail side of things, we need to also have those numbers so that we can see if there's a good balance here. And to take it down from, take it down to ten dollars, I don't know if that's good or not. I had a meeting last week, actually, they called me. Buffy McFadden, who represents Columbia, they're a great big row in the industrial park. And with them, they had Jason Huckfer with her. And he showed me, but he was supposed to send me the actual amounts of cultivation fees that have in other areas. And I hadn't seen him, so I actually tried to call him today to tell him that I, we need that information so that we can make a, a good, a good decision. We, as in the past with marijuana, we have made some mistakes. And I think that we need to really make sure that we are fair across the entire industry, not just one side of it. I think that's super important because we don't want to aviate one side of the other or the other. And I think that's something that we, we really should do to make sure we are fair to everybody. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, if someone would like to entertain a motion to table. I'd like to make a motion to table. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. DeBono?
No, I just think that's probably the most pragmatic thing to do because the numbers in the end is gonna be the telling tale. So you can't really make an assessment right now on how much to reduce the reduction of the, the fee collected. So yeah, that's, I think that's good.
Okay. Mr. Grego?
I'm torn on this one. We just got this information last Monday and this is Tuesday. I'm up in the air on this one. I really can't tell you where I'm at right now.
I thought what you had to say was most good in terms of balancing and making sure that we're doing something that benefits the entire industry, just not one segment. I do wanna see us move to, as a city, to a place where we are doing just everything we can to, to support this industry because it's a huge economic driver for the city of Trinidad. I would like to have some more information about the effect of reducing the collection, the cultivation fee as well as reducing the tax before we make a decision on it. But that doesn't mean that I, I want that to go on forever. I think we can do this fairly quickly, I'm hoping, and, and get something in place not too long from now. But I do feel like it's a little early.
Name it?
Emergency, what are we talking about? What's the time?
Well, it is, what we do is if we vote on emergency tonight, it'd be in effect for thirty days. And then at the end of thirty days, we would take a vote on it again for permanent.
And this is, and this is, right, it's just a prayer, right?
The emergency ordinance.
Correct, right.
But here's the thing is that anytime you have an emergency, typically it rolls into a permanent situation. We've had one during my tenure here, we've had one other emergency, it was not on marijuana industry. It was on something totally different and that's what happened, is that it went permanently after that. And it was justified in that case, but in this case, I, I think it's a little premature.
And the collection fee is what, ten? And now it's twenty-five dollars?
Wait, I'm right.
We need, we wanna get it down to what, ten?
Ten.
Okay. And we're trying to table this?
Yes, to get more information in front of us. So then we can make a really good informed decision across everything, not just on the cultivation side of things.
Okay.
Aaron?
You know, I, I feel in a lot of ways like Councilman Grego. I would really like for us to be able to respond quickly to these needs. I, I do feel though, you know, this is sort of Gordian's knot in effect. I mean, you pull on one piece of rope and you're gonna affect the rest of, the rest of the knot and in ways that you didn't anticipate. So I do think it would warrant further discussion, but I really, really would like to see a sense of urgency about this. As, you know, we are in the crisis now and I think we all share that opinion. We're in the crisis now, so we really would like to have a sense of urgency. Also, I am certain that this will be very well followed with the marijuana industry that is here. I think it would highlight the need of what Councilman Shu has said in... I think it would highlight the need of what Councilman Shu has said in the recent past. It would, I think it'd really benefit us, counsel, the city of Trinidad, and the marijuana industry here if we had a liaison with that industry. Some of the dis- disseminate that information. Again, it's, it's complex. I think if I had to make the decision, I'd favor the tabling.
Like I said, this is a really, really important decision that we have to make. We have to just make sure we don't have any, make any mistakes. So I think that, you know, just moving forward with tabling is really essential because, you know, it, like you said, it makes it, pull on one side of the rope, it's going to affect the entire knot. And that really is a good analogy.
Yeah, good question. Can we have a special meeting?
Sure. I think, I think what we'd have to have is a special works, our work session. Maybe we'll do that maybe Monday.
Mike doesn't want one. You got to talk to him easily.
You're not important anymore.
Then what we could do after that is bring the emergency thing or an act ordinance.
You know, I have no idea if our charges are over and above what other communities.
And that's what we need to get.
And that's what we need to find out. If we're overcharging for cultivation fees, we need to bring them back.
You know, I, I have, you know, had conversations with Mayor Bradisar from Pueblo. There's a huge grow facility there. I intend to call him and get some information of what they do with their cultivation fees. And also, like I said, this gentleman from Mr. Hofford as well, just to let you know.
You know, for those in the audience that are within the cannabis industry, I, I feel your pain because I'm right there on Commercial. And I've told you guys this story a thousand times, but I can actually gauge what's going on there by the traffic that's on Commercial Street. And I will tell you, it has changed drastically. Naaman, have you seen it?
Yes, that's, so, yeah, for school traffic rolls, it's light.
Yeah.
This is really, this is really super important.
It is, it is very.
We will have this item on the work session on Monday night. And if we have to follow with a special meeting, or at least following week have some kind of ordinance, or if it's an emergency ordinance, then we'll follow through with that. But I think we need to make, I think we will look at everything at that work session to make sure that we are identifying all aspects of the marijuana industry. I think that's the best way to go.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is it possible to do something this evening?
That was a reason for the, for the.
Right, right, to, as a good faith to the marijuana.
Well, the thing about it is it puts that in place if we do that. And that's the thing, we don't have the information.
Okay, gotcha. We can go back in.
Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And for those of the people, anybody that's from the industry here tonight, to just let you know, something that was brought up from the work session about the grow facilities, I'm not sure if anybody growing, any of the growers are here. And I did make the statement that I would connect you guys with someone from BNSF, their environmental group. And I got that information, gave it to Mr. Valentine. He was going to send that out to the growers. Maybe there is a contact person and however that was, you guys, they'll have to set that up themselves. But I did get that information from the growers. Because in talking to this Columbia, pretty much their last year's grow was destroyed because of the cannabis. All right, item, item J basically is omitted by the tabling of item I. So we'll move on to item K, consideration of purchase of type one structural engine from First and Public Safety Solutions in amounts of $592,000, $512. Entertain a motion?
Second?
Second. Mr. Backrath, what do you got for it?
Which one are we going to do first, the wildland or the type one?
The type one.
The cheap one.
The cheap one, that's the type three wildland urban interface. And that's the one that will serve two purposes, right? We'll be able to find wildland plus.
No, wait, you're getting ahead of us here. We're talking about turf type one structural engine.
K is type three.
K, he's talking about wildland type three.
Yeah.
That's K.
Which is K? Like, I have K as type one structural.
No. That's a hard.
That's mine, okay.
Is there a mention of that?
I see that K here. I mean, that's, okay, well, let's go on ahead.
The wildland?
Yeah.
The cheap one?
Yeah.
That's a wildland. That truck we built to serve our needs so it would do structural and wildland. It'll have both capabilities, both type of equipment on there to handle those firefighting needs. Do you have any questions for me?
Let's do this first before being, so let me get ahead myself. As I mentioned K, let's go back to the next one, that was the consideration of purchase of type three wildland in urban interface engine from fire range fire apparatus for $167, $687, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's where I'll need a motion on that one then first.
Make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, continue.
You want to go talk about the expensive one now?
Well, if there's whatever else you have to inform us about.
I'll answer any questions you have.
So you're saying it can do wildfire like, I'm sorry.
It'll be a four-wheel drive unit, so we'll be able to take it off the road. It's not going to be a tachyclean. So we can go out into forests, we can go out upon the peak, whatever we need to do to stop that fire from encroaching on our city. But in turn, I can also use it to fight structured fires in the city because we increased the pump capabilities on it, put the ladders on it for our ISO rating, stuff like that.
Okay.
Okay. Question, did they, did we get purchase bids on this?
So the front range, the type three is going through that HGAC buy. And so that's that Houston government program where they already vetted and got the three bids. And we started with their, their bid pressing and then with our added options, of course, it added some money to it to fit our needs.
Cool.
I'm, I'm glad that we're doing this because it just, I know insurance is really everybody's favorite. So a lot of the residential areas, you know, the backside or one side of the residence hits a wildlife area.
Urban interface.
Urban, excuse me, urban interface. And insurance companies are denying insurance.
They are.
For those in, those homes, yours would be like iffy.
Close, close, yeah.
On that end of that street that you live.
Well, I got you to take care of me.
Yes, you do. So I think this is, at this point is a necessity. It really is.
No questions?
No questions?
No questions then.
I have no questions. We have, obviously, this source of funds have been identified and the background information is obviously super compelling. So I'm excited to see here. How, how long before delivery?
Eighteen to 20 months.
Yeah.
Geez.
It'll be a while.
So I can't remember, what fund is this coming out of?
Reserve funds.
Committed.
Committed funds, okay. Okay, so any, no other, no other questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. So under my reversal of what my plan was, consideration of purchase of type one structural engine from First and Public Safety Solutions in the amount of $592,512. Entertain a motion?
Second?
Second.
All right, give us a spill of what this one's all about.
Well, this one is a structure engine and it's going to replace one of the engines that, you know, we have to bang on the dash to get it to go and drive. Fleet said that it was not roadworthy. And so that's what this engine is going to replace.
Questions?
No, Dave, do we throw the other engine in the graveyard?
I think the city has a thing where they put a mark to bid if somebody wants to buy it.
Part it out.
More than welcome to deal with that.
And then the money goes, it goes back into the.
Right, yeah, tow it off.
Okay.
No questions, just a comment. Thank you for everything you have been doing for the fire department.
Yes.
Well, I can't do it without your support. Staff and I like, appreciate you a lot.
Will our ISO rating go down at all?
So that's another process I'm working on. ISO wants to come and reevaluate our city. I think these two pieces will assist us with that. So we're right at a three right now. So, and then we did buy that ladder truck two years ago. So I think that'll help us too. So, and our training's increased, our water supply is phenomenal here. So it kind of relies on our equipment and training to reduce that rating. And I think we're pretty close there to get a better rating.
So Karen, you're in the business, what will that do for residents?
It would decrease everybody's fire, anybody that has homeowner's insurance dwelling, fire, commercial property, it would all go down. Just to give you a point of reference, when I first started in the insurance business 47 years ago, our ISO rating was seven. It's down to three. The only places in Colorado I know of that have one and two are the big metro sophisticated fire departments. So.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. Yeah, we're getting there. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a savings to everybody.
What is that process to get that rating even down further?
Well, it's about seven to eight months worth of paperwork that I have to send and submit to ISO. And then they come out and they test our water supply. We're testing our hydrants now. So that data we'll be able to give them and they'll come confirm that data. And then they go through their whole process and issue us a rating at the end. But it's a lot of man hours and paperwork.
No, no questions, just Karen, no questions.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Yep.
It's good to know you're there when we call.
No questions, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Likewise, I appreciate you. I have no questions concerning this.
And the money is coming from, is that also from the same, same place?
Got to look at the money lady.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, online.
And she sits in the back of the room.
Right.
Anyway, I have no questions. But thank you. I know that we've been very fortunate to try to update not only your department, but other departments. So I think this is clearly something.
We appreciate you, everything you do for us.
If there are no other questions, call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Got a separate note from Mr. Valentine, I know this is not on the agenda, but just a question, had a business that was getting into the fire hydrants fulfilling a thousand gallon thing, did you find out?
We followed up with that.
All right.
Did I have permit in that location?
Did we send them a fine? All right, on to item, I guess I am. First reading of ordinance, limiting parking regulations as it pertains to commercial vehicles and setting public hearing at 6:00 PM on July the 5th, 2022 for consideration of said ordinance. Need someone to introduce?
I will introduce.
Entertained a motion?
Second?
Second. And who is going to, Mr. Valentine, do you?
I, I can, Mayor, or, or Audra. We've received a lot of complaints about commercial vehicles being parked in residential areas. And we had a very good discussion at our work session regarding the matter. This just cleans up the ordinance, giving more teeth to the police department and code enforcement to move on some of those, those issues.
Questions, your counsel, Mr. DeBono?
No, I have, I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Entertained a motion?
What type of commercial vehicles we talked about?
Construction vehicles, backhoes.
Got it, got it. Okay, sure, no questions.
No questions, I'll pass what we had at work session.
It was something I was thinking about. I remember here. Oh, I did have one question here. I know that on Robinson Street, I'm not sure which Robinson or who it was, School District One has a big parking area where they park their buses. And it's in a residential area. Will that get affected? They are parking on their private property. But I think it does say something about public and private property. So I think that's something that we need to really look at.
I will look into it. I won't, I won't have the answer for you at the next hearing, no meter. But we'll, we'll get to, we'll get some, staff will look into this.
That's a good question. You know, the other day I was driving by and then I saw, you know, this question on our agenda. And I said, I thought, all the buses that are there, I mean, it's a good thing that they can park there. But do we just need to clarify that? Or do we, if that's the case, do we, or can we make an exception to the rule?
It's pre-designated as parking for, but we'll look at that as an exception. They don't have a bus bar anymore.
No, they don't. So anyway, call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item N, first reading of an ordinance, vacating a 60-foot wide strip of Jackson Street lying south of lots 18 through 26, block nine and north of lots one through nine, block 11 of James addition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Seventy public hearing at 6:00 PM, July the 5th, 2022 for consideration of said ordinance. Need someone to introduce?
I will introduce.
Entertained a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Hall?
Mayor, counsel, this is a consideration of a vacate for the unvacated portion of Jackson Street between location of 1401 Santa Fe Trail. And it's the vacate, part of the alleyway is, or street is already vacated by the city. This is in regards to block nine and this application is received for the vacation of the redway of the unvacated portion of Jackson Street on the west side of the street that intersects with Santa Fe Trail. This vacate is requested by Mr. Hudson and Mr. Co-applicant Breedlove. And they are requesting this to propose 16, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath apartments. I'm not sure if they're low income or not. If you have questions, I don't know if this, if the co-applicants are here or not.
There's also another applicant in the court, the paperwork of McGregor.
Oh, that's the company?
That's.
Of Mr. Hudson, yes.
The co-applicant, I'm not sure if he's here yet.
I'm here.
Okay, y'all, call it, please. State your name and get questions from counsel.
Jim Breedlove from NBE.
Kind of give us an idea of what you're.
I'm not doing nothing. That's Dave Hudson doing the apartments. I'm just here not to oppose it. He wants to vacate it, so I agree with it.
Okay.
My property is to the side of it, two-thirds of it. We own it around him, basically Jackson Street and all the way around him. He wants bits of apartments. We don't see any reason why not.
Okay, good. Mr. DeBono?
No, I don't have any questions pertinent to this.
Mr. Griego?
No, I'm always in, it's always good to see vacant property get back to the useful.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. You know, looking at the description, basically, that's a dead-end street anyway. It doesn't go anywhere. So.
The vacated, the rest of Jackson Street's already vacated to us and the, so we don't have half of it. So.
It doesn't make sense to do a vacate as far as I'm concerned. So we'll have a, we'll have a public hearing and then go from there. So that's another. For the questions, call vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, thank you for.
No problem, thank you guys.
And item nine, Council of Lords, Mr. DeBono?
Well, first, the, the Los Angeles County veterans, they received, uh, the Veterans Assistant Grant for fifteen thousand dollars, and a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Veterans Trust Fund, so, uh, they have thirty-five thousand dollars that can be utilized in Southern Colorado for veterans for medical expenses and so forth, so, so that's a great thing, uh, because they depleted their fund back in March, and now they've kinda replenished a lot of their resources, so, and then this Saturday, there's a free, no charge, uh, Southern Fish Fry, shrimp and fish at the Fort Wooton, it's gonna be from twelve to six, light music, refreshments, and, uh, just a small donation is encouraged, so, and then, I interviewed Linda Baron and, and, uh, Honorable Judge John Moschel, he's in the American Legion, they talked about the July Fourth Parade, it's gonna be wet and dry parade, unless it rains, it'll be wet, wet, but, uh, it's gonna be in downtown Trinidad, uh, July Fourth falls on a Monday, the Honor Guard, Fort Carson, just like they did for the Armed Forces, they were right when they came, when it was snowing and raining that day, and, uh, it's the same format, Tommy D Productions, all the sponsors are there, so, that, that's a good thing for Los Angeles County, everybody likes the parade, and especially if it's veteran-based, you know, so, and that's it.
Good. Mr. Green?
I, uh, attended virtually the Historic Main Street Board meeting, and they're trying to get together their big Fourth of July festivities in conjunction with the Trivers gang, so that was part, most of the discussion, but, they're talking about buying in conjunction with the Tourism Board, a S O O F A sign, so if you Google it, it's S O O F A, yeah.
S O O F A. Electronic type, like, you know.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's complete, it cost about fifteen thousand dollars a piece, they're thinking about putting them downtown to direct tourists to where they need to be, show restaurants, points of interest, so, that's pretty much what we did, and they did, our, uh, Main Street Board joined the National Historic Main Street Organization, so.
Okay, I know that S O O F A signs, and I'm not sure if that's the one, but I think, they put advertisements in there?
Yes.
And I think they charge, but then, I think some of them, when it comes back to the organization.
So they, you could almost pay, it could pay for itself if it was done correctly, so we, we reintroduced that avenue back into those two.
Okay.
Yeah. Arts and Culture Lab, and they continue working on various, excuse me, art projects around the city, including, uh, there's a sculpture that's being planned and made for the dog park, and some other things, and they, as we said before, they recommended approval of a mural, and then Space to Create, every side of the board met and heard proposals from our commercial broker, uh, people who are wanting to use the two up, upfront retail spaces when they're open, uh, no decision was made whether or not those were the right ones, but we heard the information, and so, they're, they're working on that and soliciting some additional, uh, proposals.
Okay.
Yes, I met with the Parks and Rec Board yesterday, um, it's time for them to update their master plan, um, and, uh, they're talking about, including Fisher Peak in their master plan, and I think, uh, Jim Green, uh, is gonna meet with us at the college, and, uh, just wanna express that don't come in so hot with the, so, uh, we set a tone and had a good back and forth about what the future is for Parks and Recs, uh, we will be seeing them this week.
Um, I had no, um, meetings I attended, I'm looking forward to, um, uh, starting to go to the ARPA Board and getting up to speed and learning about that, and, um, bringing my talking down there for Frank. Uh, Mike has mentioned several times tonight, this is his last official meeting, so I did want to just acknowledge that, and, um, tell Mike personally thank you for all the help and, um, direction and, uh, knowledge that you passed on to me through this process, it's been, uh, invaluable, um, I know, uh, it would be easy to go on and on, but I'll just share one quick anecdote, um, I, uh, loved attending a lot of the online meetings with Mike that I did, um, uh, this specific thing about T P R meetings, I would sit there, and they would ask Mike questions, and I would think to myself, okay, here comes the, uh, very ubiquitous answer of, I will get back to you on that, um, I never heard Mike say that at one of those meetings, he had the, uh, information at his fingertips and ready to dispense, um, Mike, I think, uh, in a lot of ways, you're the, um, Tom Brady of city managers.
The goat, yeah.
But, uh.
Oh, I wish I would've thought of that.
I don't want you to pull a Tom Brady cuss, stay retired, and enjoy the moment.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyway, uh, you know, Mike, um, I don't know, words are not enough to express, you know, the work that we've been able to do together, all together, the opportunities, and you and I have sat in multiple meetings, and had a good working relationship with you on one-on-one-on-ones, I think we've come to a lot of, um, suggestions and some decisions, a long way for the enhancement of our community, and as Mayor, I just wanna say thank you for your thirty-some-odd years of service to this community, and that's, pretty much unheard of, you're not, it's not been in the management position, other, uh, the city management position, but then you ran in other management positions for many of those years, so, you, you leave a hole behind that's gonna be hard to fill, thank you with that. Uh, I met with the new COG Director Jennifer Oliver, like, last week, just wanted to sit down and meet with her and talk to her, and, uh, just to see, uh, what her feelings are, and, uh, you know, being able to move forward and how we can work together, because as we know, uh, the Council of Governments is an organization where a lot of, uh, funding comes through the Enterprise Zones, C B E C D P G grants, other things that may be available that sometimes are not available through the municipality, and I told her, and both agreed that it's gonna be really important that we stay connected, work together, uh, for any projects and any monies that may be coming down, so that we can be supported with whatever. Uh, we also attended, and I think Mr. Valentine was there, that COG Housing, uh, meeting that Wednesday, and, uh, there are several people, and maybe Mr. Valentine wanna expand on it, but, uh, it just seems like, uh, they're, they're talking about becoming, wanting to do a regional approach to this, which would be Los Angeles County and Werfino County, and hearing what goes on in Werfino County, I'm not sure if that's gonna be doable, because there are some, a lot of issues that go on, but I, I wanna expand on that, but, that's gonna be a difficult, uh, thing in order to, to get the two counties to work together, because they're just, they don't trust each other, and much less, I don't think they trust us, so, I'm not a part of it. Uh, I also had a sit-down meeting with Felix Lopez, uh, a little week ago, just to sit down and talk to him about various things, and the outcome of that is to continue to try to work together, uh, we both agreed that maybe in the near future, that maybe even once, maybe twice a year, uh, we've done this before, is to have a joint session with him, which I think is probably not a bad thing to do, and we come up with, you know, an agenda, uh, when we do this, so we'll stay on top of that. Uh, I talked a little bit, like I said earlier, on that marijuana issue, I met with Murphy McFadden and Jason Hopper, and, uh, the big thing was, like I mentioned, is that, he told me that Columbia, which is right next to B N S F, that latter, they had to trash all of their production because of the contamination of pesticides, with the pesticides on their products, so, it's sitting, I guess, in the warehouse, dead, basically. Um, so. I also made a presentation to Tura, they asked me to talk to them, and the reason why they asked me to talk to the Urban Renewal Authority is because back in twenty fourteen, um, I was on the original group when that got reinstated, as far as, uh, the board, and so my understanding of the Urban Renewal Authority is, you know, we went through a day and a half training, so I have, you know, from what I remember, reasonable, um, knowledge of Tura, TIF funds and everything else, and how the processes go, so, uh, I encourage them, one of the issues that they have is, I think their, their board sometimes gets frustrated because there's not a lot going on, but they're making heavy, uh, it, it takes time, and I, my mention to them is, one thing that we learned back in twenty fourteen, was that Aurora, for instance, they started their urban renewal, uh, back in, like, in the seventies or eighties, they're going gung ho right now, but it's already been, like, forty years later. Pueblo started as well, Coral Springs, but they started twenty or thirty years ago, so it takes time to build capacity, so I, as I told them, I said, don't get discouraged, I said, just continue to move forward, they are, they are getting about forty thousand dollars approximately right now in TIF funds, and, uh, so I, I, I think that they just need to, like, if you stay focused, uh, and I think they, you know, they'll be able to enhance the community by what they do. Uh, also, last Friday, attended the Phil Long Open House that they had there, there were probably, what, eighty people, a hundred people, there's a lot of people there, uh, so that was, that was good. Uh, we also attended, Mr. Valentine and I, and Jared Chattery, attended a meeting with Goco, that was here last, uh, Friday, uh, the purpose of that meeting, as we know, uh, is we have that Goco grant, uh, we also talked a little bit about the funding that we supposedly lost on the Centennial Grant, which we really did, because the Centennial Grant has not been given out, or may not even be given out this year, there's still some possibilities for it in the coming years, but we did find out that there are a lot of other, uh, funds available that we can apply for, so, and, you know, we, we, as a matter of fact, were they going to forward that, uh, information to us?
The slideshow that you're supposed to get.
I think we get that, I think it'd be good to get that slideshow, and we get to look at that. Uh, I also attended the tourism work session, it was very short, uh, just in the stuff, they just, the marketing that they're doing, and just a reminder, Thursday night at six o'clock, we have that forum, uh, for City Council here, and, and I did tell him about the, the issue that ensued on that, and, uh, you know, we're gonna, we gotta make sure, and I will make sure that, uh, there's procedures in this, um, there's certain things that they cannot talk about, one is going to be, uh, no personal attacks, uh, no personal attacks to staff, uh, anything that's, uh, quasi-judicial, uh, anything that's, uh, legal, no, legal matters right now, and, uh, the thing is, I want everyone to know, and I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna spell these out, all questions will be directed to me, they will not be directed to any council member, they will not be directed to any staff member, staff will be there only to support me if I cannot answer the question, and that answer will come to me, and so that the public can hear, any redirect has to come back to me, and the reason why is to control, so this thing does not get out of hand, if it begins to get out of hand, I will shut it down immediately, because we want to have careful consideration of questions and answers, some of the people may not like the answers we give them, but it will be the truth, and reasonable answers that we have, okay? Uh, that's it, Mr. Valentine, what do you have?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of Council, just, as you pointed it out, that regional roundtable that was held with Los Angeles, Werfino, City of Trinidad, and Walsenburg, Walsenburg didn't show, um, was something that, uh, DOLA gave a grant for this regional roundtable to get regional collaboration, and that is, a big word in every grant these days is collaboration, and making sure what he is, you know, got their input and, and meeting the needs of the greater whole, um, it was a very interesting meeting in that, you know, um, I don't say bashing, but it's like, they, they don't get along up north, I, I think we're lucky in what we do here, and hopefully, through the process, everybody can come around to collaborate, because there's money on the, on the end of that for housing, possibly broadband, um, but, you know, it has to be proven that we're all working for the greater good, um, and that's all I have on that, um, and, you know, I've already said my piece, and I appreciate Council and everything they've, they've said, uh, I just wanna say it's been an honor to work for, you know, the city for, for this long, and, and do some good things, make some mistakes along the way, but I, I think, uh, all in all, it's been good for me and, and my family, and I appreciate it.
I'd like to say, if you're not making mistakes, you're not moving forward.
That's right.
It's a truth. Mr. Donald?
Thank you, Mayor, Council members, so, uh, no rapport, I just wanna remind Council that, um, we are having a reception for Mike here at City Hall, Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, from four to six P M., did I get that right? Okay, good, good. And lastly.
I was going to say that.
Yeah.
He's right.
Full of all. Lastly, no one's from staff, you know, designated me or authorized me to speak on behalf of staff, but on behalf of a grateful staff, we wanna thank this guy, and he has been the goat, and, you know, I mean, he's not my boss, I'd love to tell everybody that, remind him of that, but he's a boss for everyone else in this city, and I, I don't know of anyone who hasn't loved working for Mike, loved having him as the city manager, and he came along at a time where we really needed him, not to criticize any of his, any of the predecessors or anyone, uh, you know, don't, don't need to go down that road, but, um, Mike's unique experience and talent and skill was incredible, and we will never have that again, and having, excuse me, I'm sorry, having been the Public Works Director for a number of years, and just knowing everything that he knew about the city was, was quite amazing, so, um, anyway, thank you, Mike, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, on to item eleven, uh, executive session, for the purpose of determining the positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under C R S, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E, land acquisition and contract negotiation, motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote please.
DeBono?
Here.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, uh, let's go ahead and take a break, and allow Mr. Murphy to, you know, and, it's clear out, and then we'll.